Welcome to the November the 19th, 2019 Yukon City Council and Municipal Authority Meetings in the Council Chambers of the Centennial Building at 12 South 5th Street, Yukon, Oklahoma, at 7:05, actually 7:01. This evening, our invocation will be given by Pastor George Sam Cuddy of the Shalom Church of God here in Yukon. Following our invocation, we will have the flag salute. Pastor Sam Cuddy.
Let's close our eyes and bow. Heavenly Father, we thank you. I pray that you come before you in your Son's name. In this city council meeting, what a great opportunity we have, oh God, to bless our city officials, from mayor to all the other, and also all our civilians here, and bless their Adinda here in this place. So God, I pray that you give you wisdom and understanding in every decisions, everything they make here in this meeting of God, to keep our city beautiful and keep our cities safe, and also be looking at the welfare of the citizens here of God, and be exalted in the name here in this city, and keep our cities safe with the mighty protection in Jesus' name you pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go call, please.
McCarron.
Here.
Yonda.
Here.
Kachini. Selby.
Here.
Wooten.
Here.
We will now open two public hearings for the reception of both presentation and public input. Public hearing number one is for the purpose of receiving input regarding the completed 2017 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, project. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on that? Or are there any comments from the city engineer?
No.
Thank you. Definitely succinct.
Yeah.
Moving on. Seeing no further, information coming forth, we will move on to public hearing number two, and that is for the purpose of providing information, including an analysis of the potential positive or negative impacts, and answering the questions regarding the proposed Yukon Frisco-Vandemont Economic Development Project Plan. Mr. Jeffrey Saven, please.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jeff Saven. I'm a partner at the Center for Economic Development Law. We're one of the city's Economic Development Council. We've been helping the city put together a sales tax increment district, similar to the one that you have south of I-40, but this one is proposed to be north of I-40 along Frisco Road. I'm going to hand out presentation. For those of you who may not have been around when the city adopted the first TIF district, or don't have a strong understanding of how TIF works, there's a TIF model on the first substantive slide. TIF basically works, you set up a geographic area, and within that geographic area, either the county assessor or the city clerk, depending on whether it's an ad valorem increment district or a sales tax increment district, sets a base tax level. For an ad valorem TIF district, they set whatever the base value is, whatever the ad valorem assessed value is at that time, that the increment district would be created. And for a sales tax district, the city treasurer or the city clerk sets what the base sales tax number is. And then, as projects are developed within that particular geographic area, the increased taxes on the increased value or the increased sales within that increment district are portioned into a separate fund and used for purposes authorized in a specific project plan that establishes the increment district. At the end of the statutory life of the increment district, which in Oklahoma is no more than 25 years, but the city or county adopting a TIF district can actually make it less than that if they want to, all that new taxes goes back onto the tax base, either the regular tax rolls, if it's ad valorem, or the city's general fund, sales taxes, and the taxes or revenues flow how they normally would pursuant to law. The project plan itself is the document that governs the increment district. It sets and illustrates what the boundaries of the increment district are, and the increment district is that geographic area where the increment revenues are generated, and the project area, which is the area where TIF revenues can be expended. A lot of times, those two areas are the same, sometimes they're not. Sometimes, TIF collected for one project might be funding public improvements in another area, and if it's a public improvement, it's not going to be generating any increment, so the project area can be expansive. It also lists and sets up a budget for how TIF can be expended, by listing specific authorized project costs and not to exceed amounts. That budget is the upper limit and the specific categories for each limit as to how much TIF revenue can be collected and expended. It also describes and provides authorizations for entities to carry out the project plan in the increment district. It proposes methods of financing to fund the project. It projects or describes the anticipated sources of revenues that'll make up the increment and other costs associated with the project, and sets out a general timeframe for the Then it also provides an illustration or a description of what the proposed improvements for the project are supposed to be, including whether any regulatory changes to the city's zoning code or other codes are necessary for the project to be completed. And then, there are also some specific things involved, dealing with people who are in charge of implementation, who are appoint person for the Oklahoma Department of Commerce or other state agencies. The legislature, when they established the Local Development Act, which is the state's TIF enabling law, set up certain guidelines on how it's supposed to be used. Basically, if growth is either difficult, or it hasn't happened for some reason, and it's difficult or difficult but possible with the tools of the Local Development Act, including tax increment financing, as long as there are clear standards that prefer, prevent unfair competitive advantages to any recipients of TIF district revenues, TIF revenues can't be used to supplant normal public functions, and the use of TIF is supposed to be in close conjunction with other economic development efforts. There's also external input involved in creating a TIF district, and there was with the one that's proposed tonight. Specifically, a review committee is set up, and the council, if you remember, a few weeks ago had adopted a resolution of intent that actually set up the review committee for this TIF district, and the representation on that committee involves representatives of the city. The mayor served as the chairman and as the council's representative. There was a representative from the planning commission. There are representatives from each affected taxing jurisdiction, which because the proposed project plan and increment district are sales tax only, that was just the city and the county, the only two entities that levy sales taxes that we can actually do anything with. And that review committee, along with members of the public at large, reviewed the proposed project plan, made a finding as to the eligibility of the project plan in the increment district under the Local Development Act, and analyzed what the financial and economic impacts are going to be. The review committee met twice in October, and at the October 31st meeting, I believe was the first meeting, the second meeting was a couple of weeks ago, they unanimously made those findings and gave a positive recommendation to the council to approve the project plan. Going on to the specifics about the Frisco-Vandemont Economic Development Project Plan, so part two in the presentation, the first slide references the project geography, which the project area, which is where the TIF revenue can be spent, and the increment district, which is where TIF revenues collected, in this particular project plan share the same boundaries. Generally, it's the undeveloped areas north of Interstate 40 in Vandemont, adjacent to Frisco Road.
Do we have a larger cutout map? That one is larger. So, you see here, the yellow is the new proposed TIF to, blue is the city's current TIF. Okay, would you bring that across and let everybody in the audience see it, please?
A little bit of background about why the city is pursuing this project. The city's been approached by a developer who's interested in developing a portion of the new increment district into a commercial mixed-use project. It's proposed to be done in multiple stages, but ultimately will include restaurants, a hotel, a retail complex, some office buildings, and an entertainment feature. The project is anticipated to require some public assistance, primarily infrastructure improvements, but the terms of what that assistance are going to be are not finalized. The city is currently negotiating with the developer on that, so the council should anticipate a separate development agreement coming before then at some point in the future. The project plan's eligibility in this instance is as a reinvestment area. The Local Development Act basically has three different categories of areas that can be eligible for use as a TIF district. You can be in a state designated enterprise zone, which we are not. You can be in historic preservation area, which this project does not qualify for either, or you can be in a reinvestment area, which is generally an area that needs public improvements or public facilities to attract major investment, to expand employment opportunities, or to remedy blight. The objectives here are pretty much just that, we want to expand employment opportunities and attract major investment, and really shore up the city's future sales tax potential. Having a TIF district will allow the city to provide incentives or other infrastructure needs that could help lure or bring businesses here instead of, you know, across the street, down the road in the city of Oklahoma City. The specific actions that the project plan anticipates to help with that, in addition to providing potential assistance for specific projects, are some increased design approvals. We want, the city wants to make sure that anything that's built in the project area is a little bit above the cut as to what your codes might typically require by right, and it also involves some construction and installation of public improvements and infrastructure. As I noted, it's a sales tax increment district only, and instead of doing the full 25-year authorized by the Local Development Act, the city is proposing this maybe 15 years. However, the effective date of the increment district is going to be deferred to a future time. That means the city will have to go at some point when negotiations have been finalized with the developer, will come in with a separate action that actually establishes the creation date for that increment district, and so that 15-year period will not start until that happens. The sales tax increment formula proposed in the project plan is 90% of the city's undedicated sales taxes, so that's 1.8% effectively. The other 0.2% of the, I'm sorry, yeah, the other 0.2% of the city's undedicated sales tax rate generated by the project will continue to flow into the general fund, and then all of the dedicated sales taxes will continue to flow to their dedicated purposes and dedicated funds. The city is designated as the primary implementing entity for the increment district, but the Yukon Economic Development Authority is also authorized as an implementing entity. They'll likely be one of the lead entities with any kind of incentive agreement, because they'll also be the ones who can make that multi-year commitment without having it to go and be reapproved each year. The city manager is designated as the person in charge of implementation. So, the next page outlines the project cost budget that's in the project plan. These numbers were provided based on information provided about the developer's proposed project, which we'll go over on the next slide, but basically, the authorized costs, and it's, I want to make clear that this is not obligating any of these funds, this is just providing the limit of what you can spend when it's collected. Any obligation of these funds as they're collected will have to be by a separate agreement, either with a developer, providing an incentive payment of some kind for a specific purpose, or with a contractor to make public improvements. So, public improvements, the authorized costs are $6.5 million. Development financing assistance, which includes basically private costs for public uses, public improvements that are privately constructed, tenant improvements or job creation incentives, authorized costs up to $35 million. Project implementation costs, which are basically the city's costs in administering and setting up the TIF district at $1 million, and then there's a $1 million contingency for a total authorized project cost budget of $43.5 million. Again, it's not guaranteeing that it's going to generate that much revenue, it's not obligating that much money to be expended for any particular project, but this is just the upper limit of what you can expand with this TIF district under the project plan. The estimated private investment, according to the proposed developer, is a little over $70 million, but with most of that being retail or having some kind of strong retail component, the developer estimates about $670,000 retail square footage, and with average sales varying by the specific use involved, but averaging around $300 a square foot annually. And based on their phasing, they anticipate a 10-year absorption rate before the project is fully built out and generating that kind of revenue, and they estimate an average 5% vacancy rate. Our projections, based on that information, estimate a sales tax revenue generation between $414,000 a year in the near term, and then up to $4 million towards the end of the TIF district's effective life. The only public revenues that are going to be affected are the portion of the city's undedicated sales tax revenues that make up the increment district sales tax formula. Other taxing jurisdictions, the county, school districts, they'll experience the full benefit of the new development. All the new ad valorem taxes that will be generated, all the ancillary benefits from the new employment kind of reverberating throughout the community, they'll have the full benefit of all that. The temporary and permanent employment is anticipated to have multiplier effects through the rest of the community, but because we don't know the specific tenant makeup that's eventually going to go into these sites, it's hard to estimate what specifically those will be at this time. I'm sure that these projections will be a lot more concrete as economic development agreements come before you guys for approval, because then we'll know exactly what the developer's proposing. Any questions so far? I feel like I'm going kind of fast. Okay, so, the planning commission met last night, and they also recommended approval, and they found that the proposed project plan is in line with the city's comprehensive plan. The statute requires two public hearings before the council consider approving the project plan. The first one is now, tonight, and this is for purposes of providing information and providing a chance to ask questions or have a public discussion about any questions the general public might have as well. The second hearing is scheduled for the council's meeting on Tuesday, December 3rd, and the purpose of that hearing will be to allow the public to voice their opinions for or against the project plan, and there will also be an ordinance approving the project plan on the council's agenda that night. Any questions?
You're out of the row.
I'm available for questions if any of the public has questions as well.
Is there anyone from the public that's here tonight that would like to ask any questions concerning the TIF district? Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to ask any questions? I'll go with the standard rule. Third time, is there anyone here from the public who would like, yes sir, come up and give us your name? Your name and address, please?
Jeff 9704 Villa Avenue. I live in Westport. So, we back up against that space, and I was looking at the map, and it looked like there was creating buffer zones between residential and the commercial, and I wasn't sure what was entailed and what wasn't in terms of maintain, because of so much residential development is happening in that area.
Yes.
With the commercial development, I'm just trying to understand what the, what the buffer between the two would be or would not be.
In, in which specific area?
In the, of these two developments, the southern part of that development, but really just kind of the thought in both of them of...
Okay, there are buffer areas that are set aside to isolate all of the commercial districts from the...
Are they represented on the map, or that's what I was trying to...
No, there's a separate document.
Separate document, okay, that was just a question.
Mr. Horton, no, yeah, just...
Does it look like it backed straight up?
Yes, Mr. Horton.
Yes, the TIF does not represent the buffer zones that was built into what we did with the zoning here some time back, but there is buffers that will be built within those boundaries to space those proposed uses away from those residential areas, so we have taken that consideration.
There are two things, Mr. Horton, I think there's a C5 zoning, then we went to C3 in some areas.
That is correct.
And then there is a, also a creek and a wooded buffin area beyond the C3 between the, the building of the houses and any type of commercial or residential. And the C5, this was limited, so there would be no hotel or tall buildings to be close to a residential area, be offices or some type of thing like that, sir.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing none at that point, Mr. Saven, or is there anything else you'd like to interject to finish up?
Just to reiterate what Mr. Horton said, the project plan doesn't exempt any proposed development from any of the city's regulations, so any development that is built in the TIF district will have to comply with the city's zoning and subdivision code and things like that.
Yeah, to clarify for the gentleman too, just a little bit, the TIF district itself is a way of us financing, it's the vehicle that we will use to create the monies necessary to develop the infrastructure, sewers, lights, markings, all different kinds of things. There's water lines in the area, and this is the vehicle that we're voting on tonight as we move forward as a way of us financing all of those activities. And with that, that'll conclude our first hearing. The second thing is, I will announce at this time, as Mr. Saven did, on Tuesday, December the 3rd, as of the date of the second public hearing, for the purpose of giving members of the public an opportunity to be heard prior to any vote on the proposed Yukon Frisco/Vandemont Economic Development Project Plan, that will occur on December the 3rd. Mr. Saven will be here at that time as well, will you not?
Yes, I will be here, and for anyone in the public who might be interested, a copy of the project plan, which includes some of the financial impact information, is available on the city's website.
Okay, and for the other gentleman there too, the, we have plans that go through the planning commission, where the residents out there can actually come and look at the, the planned unit develop, PUDs, or planned unit developments that we have and what's going in there to further clarify any kind of buffers or things like that that would be up to you, to answer your questions, is the right way to say that. Okay, with that, that completes the very first part of our agenda this evening, is in dealing with the public hearings. We will now move into presentations and proclamations, and this evening, Ms. Vicki Davis is here, and I've got a little proclamation to give out.
and the contributions they make to our local economy and the community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States, which represent 99.7% of all of the businesses with employees in the United States, and are responsible for 65.9% of the net new jobs created from the year 2000 to 2018, and whereas, small businesses employ 47.5% of the employees in the private sector of the United States, and whereas, 94% of the consumers in the United States value the contributions small businesses make in their communities. 96% of computers, planned, and sewers, plan to shop at Small Business Saturday, said the day inspires them to support small, independently owned retailers and restaurants that they are not, have not been there before, so would not have otherwise tried. And 92% of the companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season. 59% of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. Yukon Main Street retailers have participated in Small Business Saturday in 2018 and report on average a 20%, 26% increase in sales over the previous year. And whereas, the city of Yukon supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities and advocacy groups, as well as the public and private organizations across the country have endorsed a Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Michael McCarron, Mayor of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim November the 30th, 2019, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on the Small Business Saturday throughout the year, given under my hand and seal of the city of Yukon this 19th day of November, 2019. And for that, I'm going to present that to Ms. Vicki Davis, who is here representing the Yukon Main Street program, we have in program here in town, a lot of folks don't know about it, to redevelop our downtown area, as well as, you've got a higher visibility for people coming through, particularly into the general suburbs, through this area.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. I just wanted to, all of my board members are getting ready for the holidays, we have our first holiday, but on Thursday, so they're, they're not here, but I'm glad to be so happy to represent them. Representing them last year when we did Small Business Saturday, we added a couple of little activities to kind of bind our businesses together as a whole for shopping downtown as a destination, and I did a little follow-up survey to see what type of response that they had on Small Business Saturday, and as you heard in here, some of them said, hey, I was more than 100% increased from last year, but on average, 26% increase on that one day. It was so successful, we decided to have two more retail promotions this last year, both of them had similar results, so keep on shopping, Yukon, it does help our schools and our streets, and puts money right back into our community.
Thank you. A round of applause.
Thanks, Council. I appreciate it.
The fact that most of our cities survive on sales tax is very important, and I think it's just very, very critical to our city to, number one, develop our small business community...
community so that has the intended effect of obviously supplying our city with enough money to make Yukon, or continue to make Yukon the wonderful city that we see today. So, I'm very proud of the efforts of the folks to revitalize downtown, as well as enhance our sales tax base so that we can continue supporting everything in town that we have. With that, we move on to the visitor section. This section of the proceedings is for visitors who would like to address the city, Yukon City Council on a non-agended item. Each person will be given three minutes to address the council, and by open meeting rules, no discussion will take place. Do we have anyone here this evening who wishes to address the council on a non-agended item? Mr. Shivers?
I have no requests, Mr. Mayor.
We have no requests, and I don't see anyone leaping to their feet, so therefore, we will proceed on. We will now recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene, or convene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A on the Municipal Authority Agenda is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can approve those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. City Manager recommends a motion to approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of November the 5th, 2019; B, material, payment of material claims in the amount of $363,097.15. Do I have a motion, please?
Make the motion to approve.
A second.
Have a motion, and second, is there any discussion? Seeing none? Vote, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
We will now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 is the Consent Docket for the City Council. This item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the regular approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. City Manager recommends a motion to approve, A, minutes of the regular meeting of November the 5th, 2019; B, minutes of the emergency meeting of November the 5th, 2019; C, payment of material claims in the amount of $997,614.16; D, entering into a billboard advertising agreement with the Central Oklahoma Marketing Group for digital billboard advertising space from December 1, 2019 through June 1, 2020, in the amount of $7,200. E, setting a date for the next regular council meeting for December the 3rd, 2019, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Reports of boards and commissions and city officials, Mr. Crosby.
No reports this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 3, consider approving the left turn lanes along Health Center Parkway at Garth Brooks Boulevard project in the amount of $293,572.55 to Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC, using unit bid pricing from the 2017 Concrete and Asphalt Paving Drainage Water and Sewer Project Contract as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, and second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item 4, consider approving change order number 1 to the 2017 Concrete and Asphalt Paving Drainage Water and Sewer Project Contract with Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC to add item number CO1 dot 1 regarding signal poles in the amount of $107,658 for a revised contract amount of $1,347,234.50 as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item 5, entering into an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Canadian County, known as the County, and the City of Yukon, known as Yukon, for a bridge improvement project located approximately 40, 50 North Gregory Road with an estimated cost of $300,000. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, I'll just make one short comment, and this is a bridge that has been damaged that we need to take care of to make sure that it comes up to snuff. Any, any other further discussion? Seeing none, vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item 6, consider approving the specifications and authorizing the city engineer to advertise and receive bids providing snow and ice plowing and removal services. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
So, you'll be pleased to know we just voted in to have a snowplow this, this winter. Hopefully, we won't have to use it. Item number 7 is new business. Is there any new business, Mr. Shivers?
No new business tonight, Mr. Mayor.
No, sir. Thank you. Council discussion, Councilwoman Yonda.
Well, Vicki left, but I just want to thank Vicki and her committee for the work that they have done and continue to do to revitalize our main street. They've done an excellent job, and it's certainly improved our main street. Thank you.
Councilman Wooten?
I'd like to welcome all these students, best students in the world out there. Thank you for coming. Also, I wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving next week. Thank you.
Councilwoman Selby?
Along with Donna's comment about shopping in Yukon, so many times Yukon just seems to fade into Oklahoma City. Let's remember, we need to shop north of I-40, north of 10th Street, because that is Oklahoma City. Let's keep our tax dollars here. Also, I want to thank our city employees and just the city of Yukon. I am so thankful this time of year especially, that I live in this town and all that it has to offer. So, make the most of your tomorrow and be kind to one another, please.
And for me this evening, I've got quite a few upcoming events. One of the things I take great pride in and have expressed so to all of the directors this evening at, at a little get-together that we had, very important, the quality of life we have here in Yukon, I believe, is virtually second to none. It's a great town. I'm certainly very proud to be here, and I express that wherever I go. And you'd be surprised how many people, you know, tell me, Yukon, that's awful cold, isn't it? I said, no. You know, we're in Oklahoma. But just in, for the city of Yukon, November, December, our 2019 events is Santa's Toy Shop. For those of you who don't know, there's an effort here that goes on every year to make sure that children have toys at Christmas. Sounds of the Season tickets are on sale during open hours, Yukon's Park and Rec and all YNB locations. And now, New Year's Eve, Parks and Rec Annual Holiday Helper Diaper Drive. Diapers will be donated to the Children's Center in Bethany. The center has participants in the PNR Spirit League for special needs athletes. Dope the diapers off in any recreation center. Huggies and Pampers are actually the preferred brand. November the 23rd, grand opening of Christmas in the Park. And that is 4:30 on the 23rd, we have a mascot dash, a chill-your-cheeks run, a jingle walk, Chris Carnival, Christmas in the Park drive-through opens at that time, and I think probably most of you, looking around with small children, have at least gone out and seen the white lights at least once. Christmas in the Park, obviously, is on from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM every night. It's over 100 acres of lighted displays, four and a half million lights, two and a half miles of walking trails, train rides, concessions, lots of fun, tremendous photo opportunities, so please avail yourself. Tuesday, December the 3rd, there's a Spirit League party at the Dale Robertson Center, crafts, music, pictures with Santa, pizza and fun for the league members. Friday, December the 6th, the City of Yukon Community Coffee, and it's at City Hall. Friday, December the 7th, is the Mayor Christmas Party for Kids, where we have children in some of the schools, create essays in there, and we crown a couple of winners for that in the different age groups, and I look forward to that myself every year. Thursday, December the 19th, the Sounds of the Season at the Yukon Fine Arts Auditorium is a Christmas program presented by the Oklahoma City Philharmonic. And you're not going to get, go run downtown and listen to them for 10 bucks anywhere else. Something here that's supported by the local folks here in Yukon, and is pretty special. Tuesday, December the 31st, the lights in the park will turn off until next year. And with that, seeing no other business before the council this evening, this item and business session is adjourned.